So I will hand it over to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The directors took the guidance that you provided to us on your priorities at our goal setting, and they incorporated them into the budget. So tonight is your first big picture glance at that. We've got lots of work sessions ahead of us, so there's lots of time for feedback. But tonight's the time to ask questions and provide that initial reaction. We will discuss the proposed fee increases at our next work session, July 28th, and then we'll have a proposed CARES funding plan for you at either the July 28th or the August 10th work session. So I'll turn it over to Director Regis, and he can take you through the numbers.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna try to... Where is my PowerPoint? There it is. Can everybody see that? Let's see if I can turn it into slideshow. There we go. Timetable and key events. Katie kind of already elaborated on this. Budget study session, September 10th. Adopt proposed budget and tax levy, September 22nd. Truth and taxation meeting, that's to be determined yet. And then certify the final levy on December 8th. Katie already kind of talked about the budget preview, utility rates on the 28th, and then the CARES funding on the 28th or the 10th. So with the key financial strategy, some of the things that are driving the general fund budget right now are several new staff positions. There's an equity coordinator, an IT technician. Now, an IT technician is actually in the Informational Technologies Internal Service Fund, but however, it does indirectly affect the general fund because that that fund does charge the general fund for their services and things like that. So it does kind of indirectly affect that. There's a video specialist that will be part of the body camera system. There's a police officer hired in 2020 that's funded by the DUI grant that wasn't initially budgeted in the 2020 budget, so that will have an effect on the 2021 budget. And then a battalion chief, which was built into the 2020 budget, but it will be hired now in 2020. There's also embedded mental health care worker. That's a Hennepin County program. We share that with Edina. Then there's the police body camera system, approximately $232,000 for the whole system. And I think that does include the video specialist also, I think is part of that. I'm not sure. I'll have to firm that up. Then we do have a debt service levy for the 2028 bonds, approximately $197,000. One thing I did in going through and working with the budget and working with the debt service tax levies, I have a cash flow for each debt service levy that we have, or at least debt service fund. And I went through and I looked at those those cash flows, and I went through and reduced the debt service levies by either 10,000 or 20,000 for each, almost all of the debt service funds. A total of about $150,000. And this is not something I do annually or I do regularly. I think I haven't done it probably in over 10 years. And it is, it's not probably, I don't, it's something I need to review annually because I don't want to put the debt service funds, the cash flow of them in jeopardy. So it is a little risky in that we may have to go back up to the final, you know, to the original mountains in the next year, or maybe I'll be able to tone it down a little bit. But with everything going on this year and everything, I thought maybe it'd be an option to do this. And right now, for 2021, I do have the debt service levies reduced by $150,000. Also built into the budget, there's a cost of living increase of 3%. There are a lot of employees, primarily through public safety and fire, that are going through the step increases, and those average about 5%. And then our personnel costs as part of the general fund are approximately 70% to 75% of the general fund. Any questions on that? I'll go to the next slide. Some of the other items, excuse me, some of the other items, as we all know, 65th Street was delayed till 2022. The taxes levy for that, for the bond issue for that project will be effective in 2023. Most of the other roadway projects were delayed one to two years. Within the tax levy, we have $830,000 for rolling stock and IT equipment. It's approximately $15,000 increase over 2020. There's an EDA levy in there at $570,000. That's a 3% increase over the prior year. The LGA for 2021 is budgeted right now at the 2020 levels. And right now, we don't have any idea of what the LGA is going to be for 2021 that we will receive from the state without the pandemic and everything. We just don't know what that's going to be. So that's an unknown at this time. Right now, the proposed levy is at 7.2%. Looking at the KFS, the five-year average is approximately 4.57. And our tax capacity rate is estimated to increase slightly, although the rate has trended down for the last five years.
Can I go back and ask a question about a previous slide? This is Councilmember. The one that has all the positions listed on it, did you say that in the past, the police officer was funded by the DUI grant, but now we're having to cover it in the general fund?
No, the new officer that they hired this year in 2020 is funded by the DU grant, that DUI grant. That officer is funded by that.
So next year will be funded by that as well?
I'm not sure on that. I don't know.
Okay, because I was just trying to decide if that was that gonna, it was increasing our budget, or if that's no cost. That's what I'm confused about.
I'm not 100% sure if it's funded next year also. I'll have to follow up on that.
And then, did you say that the video specialist is covered under the body camera system?
I think it is covered under that $232,000.
Okay, that's important to know. Thank you.
Anything else?
Sorry, one question here from Councilmember Wayland. If I'm remembering the breakdown of the body camera program, I am positive that the 232 did include the video specialist, which was roughly 75, 80,000. And then there was an additional, what would that be, like 30,000 to 40,000 of ongoing yearly costs? But about half of the initial cost is just one time? And I guess I'm, I mean, we have to get the money somewhere. Maybe this is splitting hairs, but should that be in the general fund, or is that in the capital improvement budget?
Well, this is the way to buy the equipment. This is what we're gonna do. I set up what I call internal leases with, you know, when we have big purchases like this. For the purchase of all the equipment, I think that's approximately $130,000. I'm just guessing. I don't have the numbers. I'm gonna buy that or pay for it out of a capital improvement fund, a capital improvement reserve fund. And then I will charge back the Public Safety Department over five years to pay that, to pay it back. That way, we don't spike up the general fund. It kind of gives us a level, it levels it out. The payment is be the same for five years, and then we'll pay that off. I think it's approximately $15,000. Well, I'm not sure. I can't remember. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, so I shouldn't really say. But that's the way it's gonna work. Okay. The next slide I've got here just shows the 2021 proposed levy as it stands tonight. You've seen this slide before. The gross levy with all the general fund, the IT, or the IT and equipment levy, the EDA levy is at 24, and then all the debt service levy is at $24,321,000. General fund is $19.3 million. The equipment levy is 830. The EDA levy is at 570. And then the debt service levy is at 3.5 million. And then the tax abatement levy is at $54,000. This is a huge decrease. For 2020, that levy was around $350,000. So this should be the last year of the tax abatement levy, which will help a little bit.
Director Regis, can you speak to the EDA levy? You said it went up by 3%?
That's what we, that's what we budgeted right now is a 3% increase. Okay. Here's just the gross tax levy history. You can see last year was 4.9, the year before was 4.87. Right now, we're sitting at at 7.2%. Proposed general fund, as we sit tonight, is approximately $26.8 million. That's almost 5.3% increase from the 2020 adopted. It's a 6.44 increase from the 2020 revised. Moving into the capital improvement budget and capital improvement plan, here's the capital improvement process. This was presented to the Planning Commission back on June 22nd. They've gone through the first three bullet points, and now they've approved the capital improvement budget and plan. So now, as recommended by the Planning Commission, the fourth bullet point there, it's returned to the city manager, then the city manager will then incorporate it and formalize it into the annual budget. Right now, the 2021 capital improvement budget is at $28,885,000. The 2022-2025 plan is at $89.4 million. Some of the significant projects, as we all know, 77th Street Underpass for 2021. Also, in 2021, we have the five-year pavement management program. This is an extension of the Mill and Overly project. Now that we've invested six years and approximately $19 million into the Mill and Overly program, this is a pavement management program to make sure that investment lasts us a long time. Also, in 2021, we'll have the continuation of the citywide water meter upgrade. That's been suspended because of the pandemic, but the estimated total project cost is approximately $4 million. Then in 2022, we'll have the 65th Street Reconstruction Project. That's estimated at $7.8 million, and that would be a bond issue for that amount to fund that project. And then moving on to 2024, the 69th Street Reconstruction Project, estimated cost of $5.5 million. Again, that would be a bond, a street reconstruction bond issued for that. And then in 2025, the 70th Street Reconstruction Project, estimated cost $3 million. Again, we have a bond project, or a bond issue to fund that. And then beyond 2025, we have the 76th Street West, Humboldt Avenue, Nicollet Avenue, and then Penn Avenue. A portion of all those projects would have street reconstruction bonds issued. And that is all of the PowerPoint. No. Stop sharing that. Do you want me to go into the KFS spreadsheet now? I can do that?
That sounds good. Oh, Councilmember, we have another question.
I have some questions on the capital improvement stuff, but I, is that appropriate now, or should a presentation's done?
I'll give it a shot.
Um, I had one specific question, and I feel like I've asked this before and just forgot, so I apologize. The water meter replacements that got delayed, are we then, did it all get pushed back a year, or are we now going to do two years worth next year? And is that four million number? Is that the total, or is that specific to one year of it?
Well, I'll take the easy part first. The four million is total.
Okay.
I'm not sure what Public Works Plan is with going forward next year, if they're gonna try to squeeze two years into one year, or they're just gonna go out two years to finalize it and stuff. I mean, I would guess, my thought would be, well, it would go two years, just because, you know, the manpower to do it and things like that would be tremendous to try to squeeze it all in and things like that. That's my assumption, but that's just me.
Yeah, okay. And then my second question, I know we've talked before about how Penn and Nicollet are kind of left on there, so that if, at whatever point the county decides they're gonna go for it, we can say like, these have been on our plan, like, let's go. Like, knowing that we, I mean, we have other projects, we're trying to get to a point where we're not maxing out on bonding each year, I guess, what happens if next year or two years from now, which I don't know how likely this is, given transportation funding is gonna get affected. But if they, if they in kind of the middle of what we've planned out, if they say like, yeah, let's go for it this year, do we, I guess, do we have the flexibility to push other things back a year? Do we have to figure out how to fund our portion of that in addition to everything we were already planning to do? Or how would we manage that when those do come up?
You know, I don't know if I can give you an answer. I think that answer is more for Kristin Asher.
Okay.
I apologize for that. But anything I say would be pure speculation on my part and probably wrong. I, you know, I don't, Katie, if you've heard anything, I don't know if there's any indication from the county on their plans for Nicollet and Penn. I haven't heard any, but I'm not in tune to that.
Yeah, I think that if we got to the point with Hennepin County that we were on their five-year capital improvement plan, you know, that we would start having discussions about moving projects around, seeking other funding sources. It's tough to get regional money for those projects, just because they're so far into the future, but probably looking at the regional solicitation as well to get, to get funding. Unfortunately, we're not hearing that we're gonna get, you know, that we're on their list for any time soon.
But what I'm hearing you say is barring any weird, like deciding to bump it up and make it really urgent, we would get like five years' notice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I did want to ask a follow-up question on the water meter item. So seeing that because of COVID, we have to delay that, I'm assuming there's gonna be additional costs since it does get pushed out a year. Is that something that we can take into account with the CARES money, that gap in funding that because of COVID, we can't do it this year? So we're gonna have to do it next year. There's additional expenses or the year after that? Is that something we can look at with that funding?
I think as long as it meets the three criteria, I don't see why not. I mean, Katie's more aggressive with that money than I am.
Mayor, that is a great question, and one that I will certainly bring to Kristin and her team. Because if there are additional costs, I would think that that would be eligible. So I will ask that.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on? Okay.
All right, here's, here's one of my favorite spreadsheets. I'm gonna switch back to the capital financing plan there. This basically shows all of our debt service levies and all the potential future debt services levies that I've guessed at. I've, if you look, see, I can show you here in 2021. Nope, I don't have it on there. But I've reduced that levy. You can see from 2020 to 2021, it's approximately, you know, $22,000 decrease. I've got decreases there. That's where I've gone and reduced those levies. And I've gone through and I've carried that forward always, all the way through, being, being positive that I will be able to do that. But I'm not sure if I will be able to. But if I scroll down here on 2022, you can see I've taken $10,000 out on all those levies. And, you know, it's, I think if I would talk to our fiscal consultant elders, they would probably frown on me for doing that and stuff. But I think if we do it one year and then review it annually and things like that, we should be okay. But again, like I said, I want to make sure those funds can cash. Because the last thing I ever want to do is default on a debt payment. So, and I don't want to get behind on cashing those funds because you need to have the cash to pay the debt, obviously, and stuff like that. But you can see, from 20 to 2021, we're looking at about a $200,000, $300,000 decrease. And a lot of that is, you can look at the Cedar Point tax abatement, goes from 353 to 54. And then we have the new debt service levy of $197,000. And then I did all the reductions going through in 2021, approximately $150,000. So the net effect of all of that, the additions and subtractions, is a little over, you know, probably about $230,000. And then you see a big spike up in 2023. That's a result of the 65th Street Reconstruction. And then it kind of stabilizes for a year. Then we spike up again because of the 69th Street Reconstruction. And then, you know, slight increase of about $300,000, little loss in $300,000 in 2026. And then a giant spike in 2027, when all those other projects come online, 76th Street West, Humboldt, Nicollet Avenue, and things like that. So, and whether they all happen in the same year remains to be seen and stuff like that. Any questions on future debt? Can you hear me? Am I off?
It looks like I don't see any questions.
Okay. I'll move on to the front page. Looking at the 2020 revised and 2021 proposed, general fund budget was slightly, slightly reduced for 2020 revised. That's, a lot of that is due to the pandemic, cutting costs, cutting revenues and things like that. 2021 shows an increase. Tax levy shows an increase of 7.2%. Tax levy, or the tax rate has gone up about 50, from 53.29 to 55.13. And a lot of the increases, as we talked about, are the staffing increases. Pretty much, that's pretty much what's driving it. And again, I got the LGA at 1.45, then I slowly reduce it going forward. Whether that's actually only gonna be able to happen, it remains to be seen, whether I'll be able to reduce it or not. And hopefully, we, you know, we get some LGA in 2021 that at least cover the million for that we got budgeted and things like that. You can see the average increase in the debt service levy. There is $237,000 decrease, and then it slowly increases to $44,592 in 2020, 2030, when that 65th Street bond. Okay. There's a lot on this spreadsheet. Does anybody have any particular questions or specific questions they want to ask? Right now, the 2021 is pretty much, I mean, we're still working through with the departments and things like that. So I expect, I expect the general fund, or budget will change based on further discussions with department heads and things like that. But we're working through it and things like that. We, we're getting there. And then we'll have to start figuring it out, what we're gonna do with the levy and things like that, try to get that reduced down to a more manageable level.
I had a quick question. Is this, is this before or after we've accounted for the CARES funds, or is that irrelevant to?
There's no accounting for the CARES funds yet in this budget. And I just mentioned it to Katie this afternoon. I'm still, still trying to figure out in my head the mechanics of how to work the CARES funding in here, because we have to recognize the costs first, and then reimburse ourselves after that fact. And then which fund it goes into, because the CARES funds will go into more than just the general fund. Predominantly, it'll be the general fund. So we may, you know, I've still, like I said, still working through the mechanics of that. But I mean, I do know that the CARES fund will provide a benefit to 2020 budget, and we should see a surplus, a larger surplus than what we're used to seeing in the budget at the end of the year because of that CARES funding. And we'll be able to hopefully use that money going forward in future budgets. Katie, if I misspoke, shut me up now.
No, I think that was very well stated. We are in the early days of looking at all of our eligible expenses and what we can do to provide better mitigations. You know, hopefully those better mitigations are something that we can continue into '21, because we don't think the pandemic's going anywhere, unfortunately. So, yes, I think, you know, Chris quantified it very well, in that a lot of the expenses are for additional things that we've purchased, but a lot of it have been for, for staff time, because they're responding to the pandemic. So that will be, those are things that we've budgeted for. So it will, you know, we will get, have a bigger surplus than normal.
I have some questions, but I wanted to wait till the end of the presentation. And I see Councilmember Troutman has a question. You're on mute, Councilmember.
Am I, am I on? Can I hearable?
Yep, I hear you.
We can hear you.
Great. I'm not sure what's happening with the audio on my computer, so I'm having to call in here. And I have a feeling I lost all the, I missed all the, all the salient points. So forgive me if I, if I'm asking something that's already been asked. Of course, the, the proposed increase is significant, and I'm sure colleagues have already raised that concern. So forgive me if I, if I just missed the window. And but, but when I look at two years out, we have a 2.9% increase, or two, or something significantly lower. So in addition to the CARES funds, in addition to some of the, some of the timing issues that we're looking at, is there anything else we can do to, to smooth out the spending so we don't have what is just an astronomical jump? If, I know it's not as big as Minneapolis or something like that, but it's quite high. And then, and then a really small increase two years out?
Well, one thing to keep in mind is we're still very early into the 2021 budget, and, you know, crafting a levy and crafting a budget and stuff like that. I can say that we, we won't come back to you in September with a 7.2% levy increase. I mean, I don't think, one, Katie will allow me to do that, and, two, I don't want to do it. So, I mean, that will be, you know, we're still early in it, or in the middle of it, so that will come down. Whether, you know, I don't, it won't be at 2.46% like 2022 is forecasted at, but it will, will be less than 7.2, I promise you that. You know, and looking at 2023, the big spike there is just because of the 65th Street bonds that we'll issue in 2022, and the levy comes onboard on 2023 there. So that's kind of why it roller coasters there and things like that, so.
Mayor?
City Manager Regis?
Thank you. Just to, to expand on that just a bit, I did want to present, though, the reality, you know, the price tag of some of those priorities. You know, we do have 3% that we've negotiated with our bargaining units, and, and then also extended that to the general services and management pay plans. And when you've got a 3% cost of living, and you still have merit increases in there, it's really, and you have your personnel costs being about 70-plus percent of your budget, it's tough to just deliver a budget that's under that, especially when you're adding positions. So I did, I do want to present it because it's important that you, that we're realistic about it. I mean, Chris and I are already starting to sharpen our pencils to see what we can do. And even with the CARES funding, because the CARES funding is reimbursing us for some of our personnel costs, you know, we didn't go out and contract with consultants. We used existing staff. We had to repurpose them. And so that is eligible for reimbursement. But I am trying to be really careful with our reserves, because we don't know what the financial, the financial impact of the pandemic is gonna be. And I want to be careful that we keep sufficient reserves if there are LGA cuts or other impacts. So we're, we're, we're gonna go back to the, back to all the numbers and review them. But there is a reality to funding additional positions.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman?
Could, could you break down, and not, not like to the, to the penny, City Manager Rodriguez, but the, the budget priorities that the, I think the council has asked for, does that come in around $350,000 or $400,000? Is that, is that fair?
Oh, no, I think it's, I would say it's higher than that. I mean, you've got, we heard very clearly from the council that equity is a, is a big priority. And so we're looking to hire a consultant to help us this year, and then hiring an equity coordinator position. And that position will be about $70,000, but you know, then there's benefits on top of that. And that position will be about seventy thousand, but you know, then there's benefits on top of that. And then you've got the body cameras, which is, you know, like a two hundred thirty two thousand. You've got IT, an IT position that was in the 2020 budget, but was delayed to 2021. And then this is not impacting the general fund levy, but we're looking at increasing. The, the resources for communications as well, and that's in the cable fund. But the IT budget is funded by all of these department budgets. We get, they get charged for it. So it is, it is more indirect, so it is impacting the levy. And then the cable fund, you know, it used to take in more than it was spending, and now that has flipped. And so we, we need to be cautious with that as well. The needs are real. I mean, the priorities that you outlined are are important. It's just, you know, well, now we got to figure out the best way to fund it.
Thank you. Quick question, Director Regis. Are you at the end of your presentation or do you still have a couple more slides?
Nope, this is it. This spreadsheet is it.
Okay, great. Thank you. I did have some.
Any questions or?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I did have some questions now. I understand a couple of these questions are probably not for this, the answers. You probably don't have them for this study session, but maybe if they could be prepared when the right work set or work session. For appropriate work session, excuse me. So one question I had around the police budget is knowing that the school district is looking at their school resource officer contract. With the city and that that could change minimally to substantially. I have questions around, you know, how are we accounting for that? My understanding is that regardless, the school district is interested in updating that contract. And I don't know how, at the end of the day, that's going to impact those two positions. And let's just say, you know, maybe there's only one position needed or maybe there's zero. How, how would that impact the rest of the budget? And then I'm assuming for the police department, and then I'm assuming that we would not keep those SRO positions as is. If the staffing needs change from the school. So I'm guessing that, I don't know if you can answer that now, but for the future.
No, I, I wouldn't be able to answer that. Sorry.
So, Maria, I can provide some of the answer. It would be an eighty, if they pulled the, the SRO program, which we hope that they don't. But it would be an eighty thousand hole in our budget because they only provide a portion of those salaries. And I would, I would hope that we would continue to have those officers on our force. And the chief has some other ways that we can help the schools. So it would be more of a fee for service as opposed to an SRO program.
Okay, so that's one thing. And no, this isn't the time to discuss that. And we don't know the timing. We don't, we're not on the same timing right now with knowing where the schools are going, but that is just one big influencer that I was thinking of looking at this. Can you go back, Director Regis, and just talk about the body cameras and how that's financed? And then would this be, how does that fit with using the LGA for like a one-time expense?
What I, what I established, and I've been doing it for probably four or five years now. In the capital reserve fund, which is where the LGA excess goes, where I keep it. Under lock and key. What I've done is, is I've established these internal leases. For instance, in the fire, fire department, they have to buy their turnout gear every five to six years. And that's a sixty, seventy thousand dollar expenditure. So instead of having a sixty thousand dollar bump in the general fund in one year. I will, will, will buy it out of that capital improvement reserve fund. And they'll pay back the capital improvement reserve fund over five years, twelve thousand dollars a year. Basically, that evens out their budget and evens out the general fund budget. And I would do the exact same thing with the body cam equipment purchases, you know, the equipment part of it. I think, I, I think it's approximately sixteen thousand dollars a year for five years. I talked to the chief about that and I said, well, let's go five years. Because we don't know how long they're going to last because they will have to eventually be replaced. The technology will change and things like that. I said, let's go five years. That way they'll be at least paid it off. If they last seven years, though, then that's all the bunch better than, you know, and stuff. But that's kind of what I do. I don't charge interest or anything to them, and that just levels off their budget, evens it out. And so there's no big roller coaster spikes and things like that. Does that make sense or?
Got it. Yes. Thank you for explaining that again. I had a couple more questions. So can you just explain again the difference in the impact of the tax capacity going slightly up? Versus trending down the past five years? What does that mean for our residents?
Well, okay, um, the, 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 there's, there's a net, net tax capacity number. And the higher that number goes, that's better for the city. That's a function of the city's market value. So if the city's market value is increasing. The market value is converted into a tax capacity value. And that, if that increases, that means you have more tax capacity value to spread around the community and, and things like that. However, it's also a function of what we set as our tax levy. If we set, if we have a higher tax levy, that's going to kind of offset that benefit of that increase and stuff like that. And you can see that then in the, the tax capacity rate, which is on line forty two there on the spreadsheet. You can see in 2019, it was fifty three point two seven, then it increased slightly in 2020 to fifty three point two nine. And now it's increasing from fifty three up to fifty five based on what we see here tonight. But if you go back and look at, say, from, I've got a worksheet here. Back in 2016, it was at sixty point one percent. And then in 2017, it dropped down to fifty six point eight. We had a big increase in, in net tax capacity value that year. Twenty eighteen, it increased slightly, and then 2019, it went down and, you know, it was basically flat for 2020. So that low, that tax capacity rate then is what is applied to each individual property. So you take the, a, a, a home in Richfield, two hundred thousand dollars. You convert that down to a tax capacity value, which would be approximately two thousand bucks. And then you would multiply that tax capacity rate times that two thousand dollars. And that would give you basically what their city portion of their taxes would be.
Okay, thank you. I just saw that in there. So I, I wanted to have that explained again.
Yeah, it, it, the better, the higher the net tax capacity, the better off your tax capacity rate will be. And the more you can spread the taxes out where the residents may not feel it as much.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Troutman.
Just in summary, so the tax capacity rate continues to go up marginally. There was a slight correction in 2019. But the decrease is the decrease in the rate it's increased. We're not actually losing tax capacity, right?
Yeah, the tax, that tax capacity is increasing. The tax capacity rate, you know, was flat from nineteen to twenty pretty much, and then now it's increased slightly. And that's more a function of the tax levy that we've got right now, seven point two percent versus. The, the tax capacity value increasing and things like that. The net tax capacity value hadn't increased or, you know, the forecasted increase. That rate would probably be higher. Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Supple, did you have a question?
Yes, when you're looking into things, can you go back and look? And tell us at a future meeting about the question I had about the police officer? That was funded by the DUI grant, whether or not that actually is going to be funded in the future or how that. Because I think that has an effect as well on staffing. And then I also wanted to thank you for all the work you've done on this. I know we, at our budget hearings, put together what the vision was and, and the things we said we would like to have. But now, when you look at this, when it's got that seven point two levy, obviously, that's too high. So we have to figure out how to live within our means. And so I'm just really happy that you're looking at all the different things we could look at so we can figure out how to make that work. I know this is probably unpopular, but if push comes to shove, we may have to look at those merit increases and decide if those can be as high as we would like them to be. But we have to have everything out on the table because we've talked about what we would ideally want, but we can't obviously afford all that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, oh, Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think I. I appreciate that staff saw the seven point two and are like, that seems pretty high. We can do better. I don't know that I feel the same as what Councilmember Supple was just saying. Of that we, this means we need to find some more drastic cuts somewhere. I think, I mean, I look at, basically what I'm trying to weigh is what are we gaining through the increases? Which I think we have all agreed are good things. And then what are we saying no to? And it, it sounds like so far what we've said no to are, is a little bit of cushion in the debt service. Category and that we're delaying some of our big street projects. But I guess I would, and maybe I'm, I'm missing other things that are more behind the scenes. But I think my main question would be, in the, in the course of trying to bring that seven point two down. What are we saying no to? And I don't think, I mean, of like our equity work, supporting IT. The fire safety with the battalion chief, the body cameras, I don't think any of those are things that we. Can say no to. Or even, I'm, I'm not comfortable saying, let's wait on any of those. So I guess I would be, if we can bring it down from seven point two, that's great. And our, our residents will appreciate it. But I think if it gets to the point of trying to say, okay, we can't actually do some of those things. Or we can't treat our, like, we can't fairly compensate our staff as they deserve. I, I guess I would rather bite the bullet and raise our revenue rather than trying to cut back on our expenses so drastically.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just got an update on, from Councilmember Garcia. She will not be at the council meeting and she will not be at the study session. Looks like there was a family medical emergency. Let's see, I did have a couple other questions. So, okay, you had City Manager Rodriguez, or this is, or for Director Regis. You had talked about potential impacts that the county taxes would have. Could you go back to that and just give us an update? And I believe that that was because of COVID. So is, what is that looking like now?
Can you repeat that? I'm not sure if I understood that.
Oh, yeah, sorry. There was, I believe there was a portion of county money that was not going to be coming to us. Because of COVID nineteen impacts from Hennepin County and that they had given us some estimates on that. Is that correct?
I guess I'm not aware of that. I don't, Katie, you know, I mean.
Mayor, I'm, I'm taking a guess that it's the uncollected property taxes. That, and we increased our percentage of estimating how much uncollected property tax we would have. Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was it. I couldn't remember because we had talked about it a while ago and I wasn't sure exactly what it was. But yeah, I think that's what it is. So is that, that's in here, correct?
Yeah, well, yes, that's factored into the 2020 revised.
Okay. And then. And then another question. Do we have, are, what are you kind of, what are other communities seeing? I'm, I'm, I don't know if the city managers or finance directors have been talking. I know we're still working on clarifying where we are at. But what kind of changes are other communities experiencing for their levies for the next year? Do you know?
I don't know right, right now, but typically I get from, I think the city of Bloomington. They conduct a survey and stuff, and then they always share that with me and things like that. So I assume that's going to happen again, probably sometime in August. I'll hear from them on that, is my guess. And once I, I do, I will share that with Katie and we'll share that with y'all if you.
Thank you. That's, I mean, I don't know that I use that to make my decision, but it's just always helpful information to have. And then I just wanted to comment overall, too. So I appreciate both Councilmember Wayland and Councilmember Supple perspectives and, and what they've shared. And I do like the framing that Councilmember Wayland was using around, really, every time we have these discussions. Just general kind of statements, like, here's what this means. Here's what we're getting. Here's what we're, here's what we're saying no to. And as, as staff looks to reduce that number from seven point two to something lower. You know, helping us gauge in that way, from seven point two to, you know, whatever it may be in the future. Here's what that, what that means, just so that we do have an understanding of where those cuts are being made and where those impacts are being had. Because as Councilmember Wayland talked about, you know, these are very important issues and these are our priorities. And we want to have a really good understanding as that all changes moving forward, what we're risking or what we're gaining in the process. So I liked that framing. And I, in terms of general comments, it sounds like, you know, this is a starting place. And there's a lot of things to take into account and factors to be brought in. So I don't have too much outside of what I just said. I do think seven point two is obviously very high, and I understand that. That's, there's a lot more work to be done, and I just appreciate understanding along the way, what we're gaining and what we're saying no to along that process. Councilmember Wayland.
Yeah, two comments. I think what you just said helped me clarify some of my thoughts. I'm wondering for staff, and maybe this is already an option you've been thinking about. I don't know if this would add a ton of extra work. But would it overly complicate things to? When we come back for the, the more detailed budget conversation, to have a few options of like. If we, if we decide, and I don't know what the levels are, but like, if we decide that we absolutely need to be under five percent. Here's what that would take. If we just bring it down to six, what, what does that look like? Or, and maybe there's two options, maybe there's more. I don't know how complicated that gets. But I guess I, that would be helpful. So then, as Mayor Reagan Gonzalez was saying of like, what are we losing? What are we gaining? And understanding that at, at various price points would really help me to gauge what is. What is worth it and what is not? And then, or, yeah, do you want to respond to that, either of you?
City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to work with the directors and Director Regis to bring a city manager recommended budget. I, we can still have some options presented, but I would like to, to still be able to do that. We do have in your, when you get your, your budget, you'll have the reductions that the staff have identified in case we have to reduce the budget. And you'll have that list of additions if we have to increase the budget. And maybe when you get that, you know, giving us feedback on that, either reductions or additions that you. You'd like to consider would be helpful or percentage scenarios as well.
Councilmember Supple has a question.
Actually, it was from earlier, but I did want to say, I think it will be helpful to know how the cares funding affects all this. Because I think that could make a pretty big dent in what's going on here. Because we've been very prudent in how we've been. in what's going on here because we've been very prudent in how we've been sending the things. But I do like, it's going to be good to be able to see all the numbers and I'm glad they were early in the process. So I didn't actually have a, my question was answered earlier. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council members? Council member Wayland?
Sorry, I feel like I'm talking a lot. I, I just wanted to say, and I can follow up with, either with Director Regis or, um, city manager Rodriguez. Um, I have to say, I don't fully understand what, when we decide something is paid for through the capital budgets or through the general. Um, because what you described with, uh, the, like, fire and police equipment seems like, uh, like, if, if it's something that we know, like, has to get replaced a certain number of years, that makes sense. But then we also have things in the capital budgets that's literally the exact same amount each year for fence repair. When, if that is that much every year, it seems like building that into the normal budget would make more sense. So I guess I, I don't think it, I don't think it makes a huge difference if we're raising the revenue for something and spending it every year, which part it goes in. But I, I, yeah, just wanted to say, I don't fully understand how we decide which is which.
Well, your example of the fence repair, that is, um, that is paid for with special revenue money, which we have to go through this transitory ordinance process with. So that is essentially liquor profits that get transferred into that one particular fund where that fence repair is paid for. So that, uh, basically, if we put that all in the general fund, that would be an effe- effectively increase the general fund tax levy. And my goal of using like the police equipment or the fire equipment, taking that out of the general fund is to keep the tax levy at the lowest possible amount. And it's just a financing tool that I use to, um, you know, try to keep that tax levy low. Um, because that's what everybody wants is a lower tax levy. Um, and that's, that's kind of a tool I use, uh, uh, you know, that, to do that. I mean, I'm always looking at ways to, uh, um, protect the general fund and keep that levy down. And that's one way of doing it. And, um, the, you know, your example again is, that's out of a, a park, park capital maintenance fund that we pay for that fence repair out of and we pay for all the, the play features out of there and things like that that are all funded with the special revenue funds through the transitory ordinance. So if we didn't do that, if we didn't have the liquor money to do that, it would probably be in the general fund and we'd be, you know, loving taxes to pay for all that improvements in the parks and things like that. That's, or we'd be issuing debt to do that, which again would be, be, um, you know, a tax levy to support that. Does that help?
Yeah, that makes more sense. And I guess I maybe could have phrased it more, um, clearly. I wasn't necessarily advocating that if fence be moved into the general fund, I was wondering if, and I, I hear what you're saying, that if we charged the full amount of the body cameras this year through the general fund, that that would be an even bigger spike? I guess my question is essentially, could we fund, um, whatever portion of the body cameras is not, um, is not going to be recurring year after year? Could we fund that through the capital budget as a one-time expense? So that then even though it's only twelve, fifteen, twenty thousand, whatever it is for the next five years, that it would be that much lower? Does that make sense?
Um, no, I don't think I'd want to do that because, um, essentially there would, there'd be no payback. The whole point of doing that is that the general fund pays back that capital improvement reserve fund. If we have like, if we have a one-time cost and the fund pays for it, then there's no payback there. I mean, with the equipment, you can, um, you know, equipment's going to have a life longer than one year where if it's a maintenance cost for the body cams or something, that's not, I mean, that's not really something tangible. It's just a, a something that you pay to make sure that the equipment's maintained and things like that. Um, it really wouldn't fit into what I'm doing and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you very much. Other questions or comments from council members? Council member Troutman?
And I'm just, just clarifying, just, uh, cor- correct me if I'm wrong, Director Regis. The, the hard cost, the capital expenditures for the equipment, that is a capital expense that, that's kind of, that, that goes through the internal lease program. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is a capital cost. I mean, I, I will capitalize that at year end. Um, and, and that will be depreciated over five years.
Yeah, okay.
Other comments or questions?
Um, this is council member Supple. Um, city manager Rodriguez, you mentioned about the reserves. For a future work session, can you give us some history about what kind of reserves we've had and how we've used them? Because I think you were saying that we want to have a prudent reserve. And so I just would like a little bit of historical, um, information on that. I don't need it right now. Thank you.
Yes, we can do that, absolutely.
Other comments or questions? This is something small and I don't know if it's a comment or question or both. Um, but, you know, we have invested in updating all of our liquor stores and I'm just curious to know kind of what the plan is for maximizing our liquor stores and how that could be used in the future for our parks and rec. Um, and, and I don't know if there is a plan, a growth plan in sales and, and what that looks like. But I, I am curious. I know, um, we were kind of waiting to see all the stores be done and see how it goes. Then COVID happened and there's kind of been a lot of factors, but that is a huge asset um, that we intentionally built up to keep leveraging. And I'm just curious to learn, to learn more about that.
Well, right now, um, the liquor stores contribute to the general fund approximately three hundred and ten, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, somewhere in the, every year, um, that range. And that, that amount has typically increased, um, about three percent a year, every year. So that amount has been increasing. And then prior to, um, the remodeling going on with all the stores, um, the liquor fund, um, well, through the transitory ordinance process, was anywhere from four hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand dollars, uh, um, a year. It usually averaged out about five hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, to, to the parks programs and things like that. And the policy right now states the five hundred thousand dollar a year of liquor profits will go to the special revenue fund that will support the parks and things like that through the transitory ordinance process.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from council members? Uh, city manager Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, just a couple more notes about the liquor stores. Um, we were doing gangbusters, um, before the pandemic hit. And then for, um, the month of March, actually, um, liquor store revenues were up, uh, it was like ten, eleven percent. So we were starting to see the fruits of our labor. And then, um, because of the pandemic, um, you know, again, March was great, but then we've slowed down since then. The liquor stores, this was going to be part of my, um, announcements at the council meeting and I'll still do that then as well. But we're going to, um, extend our hours from eleven to eight. And, and now that we've got all four stores open again, we hope to, um, start seeing increasing sales. And then as part of the website update, uh, the liquor store will have their own website. And so we hope to start promoting it more as well. So we, we do hope to, again, see, um, see the results of all those upgrades.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from council?
This is council member Supple again. Um, I don't need the answer to this right now, but I was just curious with the ice arena, if we're going to end up getting back online faster and if that'll help with the revenue situation in the future. Because I know we took care of it sooner because of the pandemic and I didn't know how that would affect. And I don't need the answer right now. I'm just curious.
I can put a little bit of an answer. Uh, we are a little bit ahead of schedule, um, not months ahead. Um, but we hope to open up that, uh, one sheet of ice in August. And they, I, they've already rented it. Um, the, the ice arena so that have been able to open are able to rent that ice really quickly.
Council member Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I was just gonna, since, uh, other council members have weighed in, um, about, about the priorities and the levy, um, I was just going to briefly weigh in to, you know, and just say that, you know, we, we did appreciate the opportunity to speak into our priorities. They are our priorities. Lowering that levy from, uh, over seven percent or over seven percent, also a priority for, from my perspective. So I just want to be clear on that, but that, that is also a key priority.
Thank you. Any final comments or questions? I just want to give a huge, huge thank you to Director Regis for all the amazing work that you've been doing. Um, always the work that you've been doing for years, but also in the midst of COVID and all of these changes. Um, and now we have the CARES money that we're taking into account as well. I feel like you're working magic and you do every year, but at the same time this year, even more so. So thank you so much, Director Regis, for all of the amazing work that you're doing and how helpful you've been to us on the council as we ask these questions and make these very important decisions. And thank you to city manager Rodriguez and to all of our department heads because we know folks have, um, really had to, you know, cut their budgets and prioritize things and make very hard decisions to even get us here where we are. And then there's additional in term, in addition to just preparing for our next budget, on top of that now is the really long and hard work of the CARES money. So, um, I just want to acknowledge that and recognize that and thank all of our staff who are working on that process. Because I know there's a couple multiple additional burdens this year that we don't have normally.
Mayor, can I just, um, summarize briefly what I heard tonight?
Yes.
So, um, I've heard from council members and there's some questions on some individual, um, proposals. And I will, we will absolutely get back to you on that. Um, I, uh, heard that the seven percent is high. You'd like us to look at, um, trying to lower that and what our options are with that. But along with that, um, framing it, um, that if we are looking at reducing the expenses, what are we, what are we losing with that? Um, and what are we gaining with, um, increasing the levy or keeping it as it is? Um, also, uh, uh, council member Troutman asked to quantify what those additional positions would be. And I actually, uh, council member Troutman, I think you're actually pretty close, that it's around five hundred thousand. And if you look at the, um, budget from twenty twenty adopted and you do a three percent increase and then you add those additional priorities, you get pretty close to what the proposed, uh, budget for the general fund is. So well done. You're two steps ahead of us. Um, also, uh, to look at the, the history of the reserves um, and get you some information on, on that. So, um, I think we have our homework for us and, uh, look forward to the next budget discussion.
Great. Thank you, everybody. And I adjourn our meeting and I'll see you in a few minutes for our city council meeting.